Uh, roll call Denise is here, Martine is here, I am here. Um, considering sub agenda minutes of September 12th. Did you get them? But they were, I know they were the electronic packet. Have you seen them? If you haven't, we can post one next week, next time.
Yeah, no, I did not, I did not notice that because I had her print me, had her print me a packet and they're not with it.
Oh, okay, in my case, I just saw it.
That's a bummer. I'm sorry.
Um, item number four, review and discuss transfer of three hundred seventy-eight ninety-four. Oh hello, um, from salaries and wages to office supplies to purchase a laptop for the recording clerk.
Someone.
Is there a second?
Second.
I guess this would be for you, Mr. Andrew. Number four.
Well, I asked, I asked about that in the office, they were talking about, yeah, the recording clerk needing a confidential computer just for all those good items.
And that is what, my understanding, um, my HR assistant will be systemated down momentarily. Um, they were trying to get the recording clerk where they actually have one. Um, but they wanted to get, as Ms. Clemmons said, a new laptop that could be used for confidential note taking.
Is it special, like, is it like special programming or something for confidential issues or it doesn't matter?
I think rather than using maybe somebody's outside. Uh, I, I'm not sure if we provided one to Mary before or how that worked. Um, my HR staff was the one coordinating with I, with I knew our T, T person to purchase. Um, but I knew they needed to get one, I'm sure that somebody would be here soon enough that might be able to give you a little more detail.
I, I think it's kind of a no brainer, it made sense, I questioned, because they asked about the transfer and I said, yeah, absolutely, you can't just, it's different accounts, you need to make sure it comes over here. But we talked about the need for it. Um, it'll still take about a month to get in, was the understanding, which is why they're trying to, you know, get it on the subcommittee. Um, but as I said to her, didn't have it before, it's good that we're having it going forward, I think. Um, however, the month is gonna take a month, it's gonna take a month by the time, you know, this goes through all the channels, a vote, a vote to the council and then, so. But the idea was that keeping everything from all the minutes in, in a laptop that belongs to the town, you know, is a, a more safer environment.
Mm-hmm, and isn't easily accessible from the outside internet world.
Right.
That makes, that does make sense, yeah, absolutely.
So, I, I mean, I, I don't.
I think, I think, and, and from the other perspective, the last, I think the last thing I would want would be to have like executive session minutes on my laptop.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, so, I, I think that's pretty much the gist of it, and it's a transfer three seventy-eight ninety-four, so.
Maureen?
Which begs the question, um, since they were talking about Mary's laptop, I thought that was her personal one.
I thought it was too, actually.
Did it, did that come up when they hired her? Like, so many jobs say, oh, you have to use your own stuff, well, when the person leaves, they have all that, all those notes and stuff. On their own personal equipment. So.
I think we exhausted this though.
I mean, she takes executive sessions, or she did, um, so, I'm just wondering.
That's a, that's a good question, but, oh, maybe I may have answered it.
Because they're, they're using it to conduct the town business?
Yeah.
Exactly.
You're arguing the point, we're all agreeing here, it's like, the courses whether Mary, what happened when Mary left?
So, when they leave, they have all that information.
So, she never had a town, that's what I, that's what we're asking.
Right, that's what we're asking.
That's what I'm saying.
So, she has all that information.
Exactly.
She does.
So, so I think you guys should be more on top of these things, like, hey, you know what?
That's why we got a laptop, because it's town property.
Gonna provide you with something.
Right, but that was the whole point, when we noticed that she didn't have a laptop and she was using a personal computer, I was like, oh, no, 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 this, you know, this is, so that's why we.
That makes sense, yes, that's, that's similar.
Yes.
So, I think we're.
Okay, all those in favor? Oh, hold on, Max, it's, Max, correct.
The, uh, transfer is for three hundred and seventy-eight dollars. A computer is seven hundred and ninety-five dollars.
Because they've had enough in their account to cover the other part.
So, the rest of this coming from office supplies?
Right.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor?
You questioning the cost of the laptop?
No, I'm just questioning why there wasn't enough in office supplies or like a transfer money.
For the person, I think that's a pretty expensive laptop, too.
Oh, I don't think it is, these days.
No, that's not even, yeah.
For the working track hardware and all the software that you need to set it up at all?
I have had it buy it once, a long time.
I mean, you can buy cheap laptops for your five hundred dollars easy, but you need something.
So, you have all the programs loaded on it?
You also have to have the right, um, storage and, I mean, especially if it's gonna be passed to the next, you wanna do it if, if that's the case, you wanna be able to have it for years, we don't want. We were just saying, right?
Yeah.
There's a problem if you don't get the right kind, because then it's outdated, you're like, solved.
It isn't compatible with the whole of town's stuff, oh, yeah.
Yeah, so this is the vendor that.
Computers, I tried to change my password word on Word today, I'm still trying.
Oh, you don't?
Yeah.
So, this is the vendor that Will Conoyer always used, so it's a reliable vendor, it's actually one of the, the approved vendors on Congress. So, we've always purchased our, um, computers through them.
Okay.
Okay. Well, we just, we just ordered an item number four, laptop percent. Item number five, this, review and discuss Maya Health Benefits Trust Renewal Proposal for January twenty twenty-three through December of twenty twenty-three. I guess that's yours, Ed, Adrian?
Hi, I'm sorry, I was, uh, going through the paper, so this is our renewal, um, rates for, um, the new calendar year for the retirees, uh, for the medics, um, two. And Blue Medics RX plans, um, as you can see, there's a one point by three increases here. Um, it went up by four percent and the, um, the pharmacy, the med, the med RX plan went down a point seven four percent. So, this is not of that increase to pass on at all. And, um, just so you know, this is something that's done on a yearly basis, no, I'm sorry, uh.
No, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just signaling that I'm going to ask questions.
Oh, I, I know.
Okay, yeah, good, good.
Um, this is, uh, something that we get every year, so I've seen, um, kind of like the same trend for, since I started last year to this year, it's about the same kind of increase. So, I don't see anything that's jumping out or concerning me, um, with, relative to this, to this, uh, one point by three percent.
Okay. Martine, up.
I can't vote on this, I'm state right away, I, this is my service, I get this from the town.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
But I, um, you actually don't have to refuse yourself, because you get it like everybody else.
I get it like everybody else, but I just wanna be.
So, it's a overall, if you choose not to, that's fine.
I, I, I choose, I choose to be most careful.
Okay, but certainly, um.
That's fair.
Um, I know that, I mean, I obviously watch all television ads and there, other, other services are getting much more services than we're getting. Um, I'm very happy with mine, but I know a couple of other people who are finding that they're not getting as much, um, service even as Sturbridge. Um, and I was surprised at that, because I figured that Sturbridge was in the M I I A thing too, and I didn't think to call her.
Yeah, and, and it's funny that you mentioned that, because we just hired Sandy Sears, she was, uh, the Assistant Treasure Collector for Sturbridge. And she is so impressed with our plans, she can't even believe it, she says that Sturbridge doesn't touch our plans, so, I, I know it's really.
I, I, I will call my friend and I'll call you.
Yeah. Absolutely.
Okay.
We, our plan is excellent, our medics plan from Blue Cross Blue Shield is excellent, it's a PPO plan, you can use it any way you want. At one time, the town offered the HMO under Fallon, but I believe Fallon has gone away.
There's only about four retirees that are grandfathered into Fallon, but.
Right, and then it's going away.
Exactly.
But the medics program that the town has supplements Medicaid A and B. And for experience, uh, my medics program has, is, is excellent. My, my chemo drug that was just ordered today is nineteen thousand five hundred dollars for this month, twenty-one pills.
Ouch.
And Medicare picks up Part A and B, and then the medics picks up the remainder, and I, I get a nine dollar, uh, copay.
Okay.
And when I go to the doctors, I go to David Faber every two months, minimum at David Faber is six thousand dollars when I go, and I don't cost nothing. So, we have an excellent Medicare program compared to some other communities around us. Now, some of the other communities around us will have like an advantage plan and all that, but those are HMO plans. So, you're limited on what you were, you were able to do with the HMO plan, you can be in Florida with the HMO plan, but if you break a leg, it's not considered a true emergency. So, you have to come back to Massachusetts to be treated. So, all in all, what we had, the small rate increase, I think is something that's acceptable, as much as everything else is going up in the world, you don't wanna see the rate increase. But I believe last year was even much smaller, or it didn't even go up, I forget.
It was one point four eight.
Yes, right, so we, we've been maintaining, and the reason we maintain that is we keep the amount of people on the program. If we had a mass exit, I would say if we offered another insurance, you gotta be careful, because if they leave to go to somewhere else, it affects the bottom line. So, I know from experience, medics, it's been an excellent program, I've been on it for twenty, twenty years maybe, so. It's been, and my chemo, right now, my chemo drugs as of with the years were a hundred and eighty-seven thousand, almost a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars.
That's ridiculous.
Yeah, yeah. Well, that's some good feedback, thank you.
I, I told you, I'm very happy with it. But, um, I just, I'll check with her and I'll get back to you to see what it is that, but really, I, I personally have no complaints. Except I love it when they get, you know, everything is free and they get money. And I can't figure that out. But I have a friend who, who has that, and every month, she's in Florida, every month she gets like fifty dollars to spend on other stuff. And she pays no premiums, and I don't understand it, but I'm happy with my raise and I'm happy with my insurance, so.
That's, that's called single payer, that's what we should.
Oh, well, that's a different thing, but Florida is not the home of single payers.
Now, Florida's not very.
Kind of the thing she's talking about is that advantage plan, because what happens is Medicare Part B is actually paying the premium for that plan. And the insurance gives the incentive of, okay, we're gonna give you fifty dollars over the counter, they're even now adding food now to some of those programs.
Yeah, I saw that.
But again, it's, it's an advantage plan that Medicare is paying the insurance company for. And you're limited to your HMOs and those kind of things.
Yeah.
Because a Massachusetts HMO plan will not work in Florida for that fifty bucks or whatever.
That's right.
You have to be on the advantage plan that's provided by Florida, well, in Florida.
Yeah.
And in Florida, there's tons of this, United, even up here there is, but.
Yeah.
That's, that's a big difference, I, I strongly, strongly, as much as we don't wanna see rate increases, medics is the way to go. We, we were just talking, maybe in the future, we could add some of those benefits, such as hearing aids, uh, by the people, you know, ventures and those kind of things. And I know we had some discussion on that, and we'll get, I mean, there's been so much stuff going on in our community, so we can't catch everything right now, but it's a relatively small increase, I think it's accepted. I know for me, because if I had to pay even the copay sixty-five dollars every time I went to the doctors, it was crazy, you know, I went to the hospice yesterday, that was crazy money, you know?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think maybe down the road, something like, uh, hearing aids is, you know, going, going to be something that, you know.
Some enhancements that we.
Some enhancements, yes.
We wanna think about and talk about and see.
But I am, I'm, I'm happy, and, and were I voting, I would vote yes.
Okay, then I'm gonna make a motion to recommend the town, uh, the town council approve the, um, Maya Health Benefits Trust, uh, renewal proposal for January first, twenty twenty-three through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Oops, that's not right, is it? Yeah, it is, okay.
Yeah.
The twenty twenty-three date.
Any further questions? All those in favor? And you have a one exception.
Just for the mode of interest, the Medicare is getting a reduction in their income January, so the actual increase you're gonna see in Blue Cross Blue Shield is gonna be, you cannot even see it, because it's going down six dollars versus what the one point whatever it is, so it's almost gonna be a wash.
Yeah, one exception.
We like that.
Item number six is review and discuss the contract between Southbridge and the Cooking Company Insurance Services to provide dedicated health plan management consultants. In this amount of ninety-eight hundred dollars for September twenty twenty-two to August thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
So, this, I had chatted briefly with Mr. Shinier up back in the cup, about some of the insurance that he's been looking to before. When we came here a couple of months back, um, I had pulled this at that time, I had talked, uh, I thought, Mr. Shinier and I may have some questions about it. And what I wanted to do was potentially go out and solicit quotes from some others. I did some research, you know, what were the qualified providers that you could go to for consultants? I did, uh, talk to some other cities in towns that had done an RFP, we hadn't done a lot. Unfortunately, I wound up, because of several other pressing matters, the camera paddles are working now on the curb side, a few other things, I, I wound up putting this on the back burner. But our contract last year was a one-year contract with the option for two extensions. They sent us a brand-new contract, uh, which is identical in terms to last year's, which would have been the extension. Um, we have had no issues, they are on the list. In the, just in the interest of, um, what we have going on, I was going to recommend that we continue with Cooking Company for this one year, we've already talked to them. They said they would do a complete evaluation of other plans, um, which, that was an issue that Mr. Shinier had inquired about. Um, and then we would have time later on in the spring to, to do a formal RFP for a longer-term, um, consultant.
Okay. And what's your, what's your reaction to what they have done so far?
My last town used Cooking Company as well, um, they always seem to find us decent rates there, um, they've been working, you know, for the town for, prior to my arrival. I don't know that there had been any complaints when I showed up and, except for, we had an issue, you know, some questions during the IAC meeting. Uh, that was the first time that I ever had, you know, anybody bring any concerns at the time, but they've ensured us that they would care of the questions that Mr. Shinier raised at that time, about going out and doing a full evaluation of the various plans. And, um, there's actually a plan that's, one of the neighboring communities that has, it's a Harvard, built-on-base plan, so we, you know, we will include those in the next as well. And we've always had, at least for the most recent history, Blue Cross Blue Shield plans, and I know that is something that people like. If they did recommend something, obviously, we would have to sit down with the IAC if we were gonna change plans. But, um, you know, we'll, we'll go out and die, we'll look at what the best is and sit down.
Please.
So, this, this contract, you know, has a lot of things in it, my question is, have they done these things? Not this big overview, that's nice, but the little things. Uh, review the quarterly loss ratio reports and annual renewal proposals for Maya, and when they review those quarterly loss ratio reports, do they send the town something on that? Do they provide the town with the fiscal budget projections and appropriate time as requested? And a lot of it would, would bother me, a lot of it is as requested by the town. So, if we don't request something, like overall valuation, health and dental and auxiliary plans, including cafeterias, upon request, everything seems to be upon request. So, if we're not actually asking, and do we ask, or don't we ask, then we don't actually make them do much work. Um, analysis and review of the town's rating history upon request of the town. So, I guess I would just say, like, I don't know who's in charge of that, if that goes to HR or who that goes to now, but, uh, we should be getting something. They're offering it, they're saying, yeah, we're here for it.
Yes.
But if, if we don't make them do the work, then the ninety-eight hundred dollars is wasted.
Sure, sure.
You know, if we don't care if we even look at those numbers, if we just go, yeah, let's have an overall analysis later on at the end, you know, provide, where's the ongoing, you know?
We have had regular meetings with Cooking Company, and they invite in Maya, and we do go over the loss ratios, um, and give us guidance as to where we can make improvements. That has happened during my time here, before Ms. Rubena showed up, we were doing that with Ms. Zawodski, who's being managed by the county's office.
Okay, well, that's good, I just, like I said, when there are things that say upon request, again, it kind of hurts with the cable conference, I should just say that, you know, if we don't ask for something, it doesn't get done, no, they don't, they don't do it. I mean, it's there, it's in a, it's in an agreement, but nobody's doing it, because nobody's adding.
They've been pretty good, they usually reach out to us and say it's time, uh, to get together.
Okay, good, I'm glad to hear that, I just see, I see that thing. Good point. Trying to get working this morning.
That's right.
All right.
Absolutely.
That's a nice job, right?
No, I mean, Joel's been very collaborative, as the town manager alluded to, they provide us with utilization reports, loss ratio reports, they let us know, you know, um, they, they don't tell us who, but they let us know, you know, you know, you have a larger group of diabetes, you know, what our claims are about, just so we can get an idea. Maybe we can work with our wellness partners and, you know, promote some wellness activities to help the workforce, so we can minimize our loss ratio. So, it, it's, in my opinion, they're a great business partner. And if I, uh, if I do ask them for anything, they're very responsive, I get a response within the same day, and they've never said no to me.
Well, you tell them that after like eleven years of going to the MMA conference, and then they weren't having the conference, I miss the calendars, I need a new mousepad.
The calendar, I'll let Joel know.
And they once nailed it to me, because they ran it out, so you let them know that that woman, the county council, wants that last calendar, that's very.
The correct year, so.
I'll tell you what, the correct year.
I have the old one, it doesn't help me, I have, it, it confuses me.
That's why you have really good.
I'll make a motion, uh, for that, that, the, recommend the council renew the contract between the town, Southbridge and Cooking Company Insurance Services to provide dedicated health plan management consultants to the town, amount of ninety-eight hundred dollars per year, effective September first, twenty twenty-two through August thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Reenove for additional, uh, two additional years of this old special town.
Second.
Second.
Cheers.
I just love it, do that, just sing it louder.
Any further questions?
Can I make one suggestion maybe? Uh, we had some discussion with the, had any insurance advisory committee, it was to change the renewal date from January to be all the insurance dollars.
So, align it with the fiscal year.
Right, and it was, it was a discussion, it would have made active drop a little bit easier instead of doing insurance halfway through the year. And, and the other thing that, when they were talking about sharing the claims and those kind of things, is that the insurance review team just got bottom lines? Because you can't, because of HIPAA, because you could figure out somebody out there that shoots a million dollars worth of insurance for that person, and so they shared with the, the people that run the town, and not so much the insurance advisory board, or the council, because of the HIPAA laws.
Subjected health and insurance.
And, you know, the manager's the one, you know, he, he caught this thing, like Denise talked about, upon, upon, you know, request, and he assured the insurance advisory committee that when it comes time to do the renewals and the reviews and those kind of things, that now, I think, the IDH R makes things a little bit easier.
So.
So, I, I think we'll see some, some good changes in the next few months.
Would it be reasonable then to suggest, um, I, I don't know, I'm just putting it out there for, you know, some recommendations, that instead of renewing it for twelve months, we renew it, renew it for eighteen months?
You'd have to talk with.
So, we can align it then with the, with the, uh, with the fiscal year?
I don't know, is it something easier that you're gonna have a discussion with the management?
Do you think that makes sense? Or should we just keep it twelve months and not think about that?
I would do it for the one year, so that we, we said that we'd go out and review this, and then we could do that, you know, maybe.
And then align it.
Okay, okay.
It's not hurting us to do it now, there's nothing else going on, it's kind of a nice time, you don't, you don't boggle down with all the other stuff you're doing.
Okay.
It's good.
Excellent, thank you.
Um, I just have a question, is there a mechanism for like employee feedback?
So, we can, we can ask them to, um, develop a survey and push out a survey for us, because Maya's really good with those things, we do that for wellness, so we certainly can do it for our health insurance. I'll ask for that as well.
Good question.
Any other questions?
And I just discovered today, just that this has the ability to push out surveys. Mean toy, so.
Hey, and now we're gonna use it, whoa!
You mean those consultants didn't teach us that part when we were here, didn't teach us that?
Uh, no, they didn't do as much as.
Oh, sorry, she's on my turn.
Yeah, they didn't, they were not bringing us.
No, that was a bad sign.
Uh, Kendra, all those in favor?
Uh, it's a year, uh, number seven, discuss the potential for creating a forest management result revolving fund. Um, and this is something that Steve suggested while Maureen and I were out doing a sidewalk, um, a couple, like a month ago. Um, so I, and the idea is to hold funds from, from tree cutting, so that, so that the water department can do invasive plant removal and other stuff at the forest floors. So, anything? So, is this your idea?
Yeah, as you, as you said, we, uh, started off with a forest management plan, it's a ten-year plan with selective harvesting. And, um, our foresters also on the lookout for things like invasive species out in our reservoirs. And you did note that we do have, um, two or three invasives that are just starting to take a foothold. Um, normally, in the past, when we've done cutting plans, the proceeds that come from those cuttings, uh, because the forestry company that comes in and does these harvestings pays the town for the wood they take out.
Right.
Um, in the past, that money is just dissolved back into the water general fund. And one of the thoughts I had was with, uh, Council Steve's in, in Maureen down the woods, was what if we could, instead of letting that money disappear back into the fund, set up an account where that money could stay, and we could use it for, uh, whether it's invasive species control with a specialist, or whether it's certain equipment that we procure that'll help us take care of those invasives, uh, to, to kill the regeneration cycle with like a, you know, a different type of mower, or different, all kinds of different things, but it'd be nice to have that, that fund that is solely for that, because we've never had any way to fund that sort of work in the past.
Okay.
So, ask Council Steve if you can bring it up and for discussion.
So, in the past, how have you done that work?
Control of invasives?
Yeah.
We haven't.
You haven't? See, I see a bunch of handles, so.
So, I'm just curious, because I see invasives, and I think different things, because I used to manage the lakes and ponds and all the other communities, and we, we do know for that type of invasive, you know, treating the water. Or are you talking about like silver nipples and different types?
These are buckthorn and, um, uh, what's the name we have along the side of the road?
Bittersweet?
Bittersweet.
Uh, they're, they're pretty aggressive.
You gotta, you gotta taste, that was one of my questions.
Like a little, it's, yeah, it's got terrible, terrible needles on it.
Because we're just getting ready to start our harvesting plan, DCR was just out this week, I was able to, uh, spend some time with the water watershed discussing these things. And you were saying different methods, they can use mechanical methods, no chemical methods in the watershed.
Right.
And there are different things you can use to control these invasives as they come in, and, uh.
That's why I ask, because I was used to chemically treating some of the stuff in the ponds and the other types.
Some of it will be handwork, it'll be, that year we spent some money to have somebody come in and pull, like, it'd be that kind of work, very glorious.
Right. Have you had a chance to check it, to co, to check on costs?
Not yet.
I see, I've got Maureen and Denise, Denise.
Okay, just another thing about bittersweet, every, you've gotta get every bit of it.
Yeah.
Any, anything that's left is gonna take hold. And the other thing is, this does not go to beavers, right? You still have to go to the concom.
Correct.
Okay.
This is invasive plants.
Okay.
Yeah.
Invasive animals are a whole different.
I just, I just wanted to make sure.
It's like a pond, it's a different form.
A floor in a different side.
Right. Denise?
Do we, um, you know, you brought this up, and it's an agenda item, did anybody look into, two things, first of all, you obviously know, when's, how often do you forest? How often do you, do, do the, um, clarification of the.
The harvesting?
Of the harvesting, so you could be of a harvesting, and secondly, what kind of funds have come in from the harvesting in the past? Do you have some sort of number?
We do.
Per, per time or per year?
So, over the ten years, we try to selectively harvest areas within our watershed, which is in Massachusetts, about twenty-four hundred acres. Um, we try to get to the areas that need it the most, that does vary, uh, last time we harvested was two thousand and twelve, and we've let the forest regenerate since then. In the past, depending on the, the wood markets, um, I've seen pine cuts that brought in five thousand dollars, I've seen hardwood cuts that brought in thirty thousand dollars.
Right.
Uh, and it really depends on the season, the market, uh, all that. So, there is variability there too, that I couldn't, couldn't predict, give you a hard number, so to speak.
Right, but who would have kept track of that, the town?
Yes.
I mean, the money comes in, there's gotta be, uh.
I could, I could dig through as well, recognize those for you.
Yeah, or is that something that, that would be easy, I mean, there must be an account that that money comes.
The back, then like I said, it went back into the general fund, over the course of ten years, it was just deposits from whatever forester won the bid for that cutting each season. The back, like I said, it went back into the general fund. Over the course of ten years, it was just deposits from whatever forester won the bid for that cutting each season.
So did you, you must have kept contracts or receipts from that?
I could find them. I was, Tom Cutler was still here at the time. I wasn't involved in the programs, but I could, I could go back and find those records.
Interesting. I guess I'd be curious to see what type of funds you're looking at. You, that'd be good for you to know what kind of funds you're actually looking at over the next.
We're, we're getting ready to bid on our first cut. That'll be interesting to show us where the market is now. For this, this, this winter, we're planning a cut. We have to, we have to harvest during certain other animal species, lizard species, when they're in their harvestation cycles.
Right.
So there'll be options of work, ones that work.
Right.
So then the follow-up, the question to the TM would be, then would that type of money have any real effect, negative effect on not, it not going into the general fund? You know, if it's now, I mean, clearly we're gonna have to pay that money somewhere along the line to, to do it. It's gotta be done. So if not, and is it, would it be difficult to set up the revolving fund in general? I mean, it's just an accounting, so.
I'd obviously want it to for this harvest, but I don't think it would be that difficult. My guess would be, we could probably find a probably offset expenditures in past years for doing the type of work you're looking. So that it may have been a wash. I don't know if, if, you know, if we had surplus of funds, I think what you, where you're going is, would we be losing revenues elsewhere? So we made thirty thousand, and we only spent fifteen thousand on fighting invasive species. Is that shorting the town fifteen thousand dollars? That, I don't know, off the top of my head, but we could, you certainly look into. How much the revenues in the past and what the expenses were to see if there was a surplus or deficit.
And the, and the spirit I was going for with this is that invasive control wouldn't then affect the operating budget and for the following season, you know, possible rate changes, we could, kind of keep that money in-house to work within the watershed. It's kind of where I was, where I was going with it.
Right. You, obviously too, once you cut the trees, they're not back for, I mean, you, you, there's a.
Right, there'll be, there'll be, after ten years, there'll be a, a certain timeframe where there's not a funding mechanism coming in.
Right, so that will just go. So that makes sense, but yeah. No, I think that's a good plan.
Mike?
Uh, I certainly don't have any problem funding something if they need to give a, invasive plants. I don't think the council has ever had a problem with that in the past. All they have to do is come to us, ask for the funds. If they wanted to make it a budget item, I wouldn't have a problem with that. Creating a revolving fund, that I wouldn't have a problem with, because as we've seen in the past, we have so many different accounts out there that we can't keep track of. And sometimes we find funds sitting in accounts somewhere from two thousand and sixteen, and no one knows how that account got there, how much money is in that, who's responsible for it, why hasn't it been spent. That's why I don't, I just think, keep it in the general fund. If they need the funds, that's fine. I have no problem with that. Revolving funds, I don't really care for all these different funds out there all over the place.
Well, this, the revolving funds are defined by, by law. And we, we actually have to vote, we have both their, we vote the specific amount of money that goes into the, every, everybody's. They're, they, we have to by law. Um, in fact, they are, they are chapter eleven of the Bible. In fact, that's one thing we would have to do is actually draft wording to put this into chapter eleven of the Bible.
Certainly, Council Marketti, that's, that's how the council wants to be funded, invasive controls. I'm perfectly fine with that. Uh, having never managed a cutting plan myself, I wanted to basically spur conversation on what to do with those funds, because it's something we haven't had in about a decade. So if we want to go back to the general fund, I'm, I'm fine to do the work anyway. I'm instructed.
To be honest with you, I personally would have no problem, since you guys are there seeing it. You know, I would have no problem with, with having, having revolving fund and having you guys do the work that you see when you need to get it done, and just kind of report back after the fact that we did this, this, and this with this, with this revolving fund this year. You know, since you guys have to kind of report to us occasionally anyway. That's, I think it would be a lot easier to have it get done more effectively than having to go through, quite frankly, the bureaucracy of the council. And we all know how long that can take. But she, he has the extra, I wasn't gonna say that, but you did.
The bureaucracy is, is not the council. The council keeps control of the money as well.
Without the council, then you will have more control by the bureaucracy. Well, I slightly, it's two things on that. One, I agree on the bureaucracy side, because the real problem you have is that when budget season comes and things are tight or something, and then you go, well, we don't really need more. How much is you, well, you didn't use enough of that last year, so we're not gonna fund you that this year. And then instead of it being with the professional who needs, you know, knows what they need, we end up with the council who, by virtue of their ability, voted by the people to oversee the money, making decisions that are out of the realm of their scope of
Their experience?
Ability. Yeah, okay, whatever I said. But anyway, so, on another hand, I understand Mr. Marketti's point, uh, Council Marketti's point about sometimes finding funds that are not necessarily revolving funds, but funds, accounts with money in them that were never spent. I mean, I get that. And that obviously is an issue to be cleaned up and worked on on a regular basis to make sure that, you know, when I ask, you know, Solid Holiday Vision has an account, you know, whatever. Uh, what do we have left in that? You know, Karen has a list of four pages of different accounts, you know? There's a lot of accounts to, for a fifty, a sixty million dollar town. Um, so I don't disagree with the fact that there's, there can be, there has been, and there probably always, there probably will be in the future, um, problems with money sort of hanging around or should be better, better spent. But I think a revolving fund that has accountability to it, it just makes sense. I, I have no problem with, with the idea of it. Obviously, it'll go to council or not, depending on the recommendation here tonight. Or whether or not this is something I think that perhaps the town manager probably needs to speak with Karen about. Uh, maybe it's input on, on that accountability and, and how that all will work, and then bring it back to agenda for a, for a final, uh, motion as to how that would be.
And probably for the wording, for probably for the wording.
For the proper wording or whatever, right. And then that would be sent up. And if the council chooses to act on it and, and approve it, so be it, you know? But I think, I think just gotta make sure that we know what we're talking about here, and everyone's comfortable with even presenting that up.
That makes, I think that makes sense.
Because I think this is good discussion, and Mark, Council Marketti brings up a lot of points. But I do, I do think the idea of that fund based on monies coming in from the land that needs to be taken care of from. And is it just gonna be invasive species? Is, I mean, and other needs. So that makes sense, because it's needs of that land, and that land can be self, self-sufficient. It can take care of itself by virtue of the monies and not have to worry about whether or not there's enough money to, the school budget or something, so we pack a bunch of stuff. It has money. It will always have some money from the, until it runs out of the timber.
Right.
So, and if it runs out of the timber, then the plants take over and that's.
Maybe they'll sell them.
It's actually responsible, right? It's a responsible way.
Absolutely, totally agree.
It's the cycle, you know?
I thought it was a good idea, yeah. Right?
So.
Maureen?
I just want to advocate for the, uh, revolving fund. Um, I know it's a headache. I have trouble keeping track of all this money, but these invasive, when you said bittersweet, that's gonna run rampant. And if there's any niches that are open, like from cutting, it's gonna take over. Buckthorn too. Uh, buckthorn is bad. Um, so, or any, you mentioned milfoil in water, that's bad. And, and a lot of people don't understand these invasive plant species, so they'll be like, eh, whatever, I'm not gonna vote to give them a hundred bucks or whatever. I know, I saw.
A hundred bucks.
Yeah, not a hundred bucks, but, um, you know, whatever. Um, so I urge you guys to vote the revolving.
Um, Steve, do we actually have any issues with waterborne invasives in the reservoirs?
No.
Not water?
No, nothing, nothing I've ever seen.
Good. Anybody else have comments or questions?
Second.
Um, with global warming, are we gonna get more invasive species?
Most of your invasives come in through bird migration.
Okay.
So, uh, not natural birds, but yes, I would think that.
The answer to that would be yes.
Oh, yeah.
Um, also.
They tend to carry the seeds with them and then.
They just, they eat the berries and poop in your beds, and you get, you get poison ivy in your daylies.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, and it wants to, and it's.
I do care.
Water ivy is an invasive.
Also.
Yes, but it's not a good one as well.
Yeah.
They're not fun.
Also, I know that, that, um, ash trees are having some kind of a disease in other parts of the country.
Kind of disease.
Is that gonna start to be a problem here?
We don't really have a lot of ash. Uh, most of our timber is pine and oak.
Okay. Okay.
Is the majority of our, our forest, some maple. A lot of the insects, the Asian longhorn beetles going after, we don't have that. Big problem with that out here. Um, we're in pretty good shape as far as that goes.
Okay.
People are for a special.
Hemlock?
That's, no, we're the ones the Asian longhorn goes after.
Oh.
I can't remember now.
And there's a new one, the Chinese.
I think they're more, I think they're pretty, pretty general, like, pretty general. They go after all kinds of things in the western.
Yeah, they take the big ones in the cities and run the streets.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then I just said, Steve, there's a new one, uh, night time, Chinese red lantern.
Yeah.
The lantern fly? Yeah.
The spotted lantern fly?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like the, the new one.
It's a very green thing.
So far, our, our forest has been unaffected by that sort of thing. Back on.
Yeah.
Yeah. I know we're seeing some of those.
It's real.
Around our house.
One, one little bug, one bird with one seed.
Right.
So it's all, all it takes, yeah.
You know, like the waterman taking all their pine trees out because it's sucking the water out of them.
Maple birch elm, ash poplar, horse chestnut, and willow, all of them, Asian hornbears.
I'm more worried about the tech, the bite, Katie Red Meat, and I never wanna see those ones in my life.
You're in Western, yes. I mean, Western US.
The long, long, uh, ball star tech?
Yeah, yeah.
I feel like when you come allergic to red meat, that's the worst thing in the world.
I've heard of that.
Can't have a burger again.
Yeah.
Whatever, whatever's wrong to, to keep it out of Southbridge.
I'm gonna chip it.
I couldn't survive without chicken and fish.
Well, my wife, my wife's way washed it. I don't know whether it meets about lately anyways, unless I start at McDonald's.
Well, McDonald's isn't quite qualified as meat.
That's the secret.
Very. Mr. Karen, okay, stay on chat, who's staying on? Do we want to make, uh, a vote, a recommendation that the TM bring back?
Very good. So how do we do that?
Yeah.
I have no problem with doing that. I mean, would, would we send that to, up to for council votes for the recommended, or just recommend?
No, no, you would just get more than that.
Yeah, because you don't have, you don't have a, uh, to make a recommendation until, to.
Okay.
No, 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 right, we don't have to, but it's kind of one of those things that the count, that the, the committee, in other words, you know, hey, look, I'm making a motion that we, uh, ask the town manager to get more information, bring it back for another agenda item.
At the moment, it works.
Yeah.
That's fine.
And I already sent that email to Ms. Harlowe, so.
Okay, yeah.
Sounds like a good thing to me. Next time I can postpone till.
And we support it? Yeah, any further action until, right, that's, yeah. You can do it either way, however you want to write it.
Right. Right, okay. Okay. Do we have one up until the next meeting?
Uh, and, well, till the team's ready for this. Well, see, if you postpone, you have to have a date certain. So all I'm saying is it's important to have the town manager bring us back the information to put on the dates.
Exactly, yeah.
You're not even sending it up to council, so you don't even take a vote.
Yeah, you're right, but it's, it's to solidify the committee's support of getting the information. That's all it is.
True, that's true, just for formality. Have you got to do the work?
It's just a, it's not an action vote, it's just a.
We'll need one in the notches in the future, because the fire station building committee wants to advance a question to this body, which we didn't have it ready to go this long, so I'll be asking you.
So if you need next week, two weeks?
Yeah, I think next week.
Yeah, get, come, come, please, give us next week, please, this week, rather. Not next week, two weeks.
Probably before.
Okay.
Yeah, two weeks.
Two weeks, okay. Okay. So do we want to set, try to set one then for like two weeks from now?
Well.
Well, well, I made a motion. Do we have a second or do I?
Second.
Okay. So you get that motion of what I said? It's not postponed, it's asking the town manager for a day.
Okay.
There was a motion, let's finish it. Do you think, dissolve it or do it?
Bring it back.
And, and I will reach out with you with Hannah by office to schedule. Once I get, I have to work with Ms. Harlowe, um, on the request from the fire station committee.
Okay. Okay.
Good. I'll take a vote. Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Just make it official, because we're on camera, right? This is for the record.
Okay, very. And the last item was to, to, can you discussion, whoops.
Never ending drones.
Well, I only, I only threw that back on because of the fact that I was thinking about it, that the way the town council vote was, was written, it said that the, the, the police and fire departments cannot use the drone that we have until we approve the drone policy, as opposed to the bylaw.
Okay.
Which, right, which, I know we voted to put it postponed until January. So, so I thought it made sense to throw it, to throw it back on unless, and because I remembered in the course of the last discussion we had, the manager mentioned concerns about, about the council even getting involved in internal pol- department policies anyway. So.
Right.
I'm not quite sure exactly, because, because, and, and he's got, he's got a point. But so, but we kind of have a point between the internal policy being controlled by the manager and the department heads versus what the town council actually voted to do, or necessarily it's not to. You remember the vote, right?
Well, so, but the kind of, you're saying the vote was to wait until there was a policy in place. It didn't say.
It specifically said council to approve a policy.
But that is counter to charter.
That's, that's kind of the problem. It's, that's what, but that's what's said.
So the vote, the vote's illegal if it was counter to charter.
So, any thoughts on that?
No?
I don't know, John?
Why not? It's, well, no, what I'm asking.
If it's what? If it's against the charter, it's.
Well, that's what I'm asking. That's what I'm, just bringing it up for discussion, not to me. I'm not saying so, I'm just saying.
That's why, that's why I just wanted to bring it up to clarify.
Yeah, if you know what the wording was, that's important.
I thought, I thought it was, I thought it was specific that you would, that the departments would not be allowed to use it until the council voted to approve, until the council approved the policy.
Didn't say bylaw, it said policy.
Well, it did say policy.
Okay.
It doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to be a departmental policy.
As a policy.
The policy was.
The council's not gonna, it can just be a policy for the town.
You matter?
The bylaw we were working on is originally for the civilian.
That's pretty, that's general law, bylaw. That's different.
The policy was, was what the fire department, not even so much the police, was the fire department was gonna come up with a policy to be able to be used.
For use.
And they did.
The fire, I think what happened was the council was going to look at that policy, if it was acceptable, or they wanted maybe some added tweaks to it.
And they did.
But it's not their right to approve an internal policy.
They've done it before. They've done SOPs at the fire station, all those kind of things.
Yeah, I, I absolutely, I agree with you.
And I, 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 I don't see where it said that in the, in the charter.
No, 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 we're not saying the fire department, Mr. Shinji, we're not saying the fire department can't do a, an, an operating procedure, whatever, but we're saying that as the TM brought up the charter commenting about policies.
I don't think he brought up the charter part of it. He just brought up the fact that the, getting involved into the fire department's business like that is controlled by the chiefs. You know, it's like telling the police chief, you're gonna wear a gold badge versus a silver badge. I mean.
Well, I just read an actual paragraph.
He, he was, he did say, he did say charter.
You don't have to work with the charter.
Yeah. He read a paragraph out of it that said internal, um, that's due to internal policies.
The internal policy is in his hands, yeah. That's true. Mike?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't the town council responsible for all policy? Is there a difference between internal policy, external policy? I thought the charter, if you have the charter up on your, uh, computer there. Well, it's, it's the town council responsible for certain policy.
Yeah, I'm.
I think it would be under, uh, town council, some kind of policy.
What meeting?
God, I don't remember.
Well, regardless.
And now, and I, and I just, for some reason, I just lost the name of the exercise now, so.
Instead of arguing over all of that, why don't we just start working on the policy?
So, to that point, I was gonna say that I would, I wanted to bring out two, is they, they brought, they had a policy.
We already have a policy, right? Yeah. They did.
There might have been a few things in it, because we read through it together.
Discussing it, right.
And I, and I don't know, the only two, I think there was concern as to who was the operational person or something.
Right.
Other than that, because that was against, I think there was a conflict. Was there not on state or was there some conflict as to who
No, I think, I think it was, I think it was.
could be in charge of the drone, um, officially. I think that was the big catch. Other than that, I thought that we were all talking about the policy being quite comprehensive.
Yes.
Yes, so it is.
And as I, as I recall, your issue was brought up something that was, it wasn't so much a state law or anything, it was a conflict with a more general, like general practices within the fire service, I think it was, or. I don't know exactly what it was, but it was basically the idea that you shouldn't have a command officer controlling the drones.
Right, something's right there.
There should be a specific fire, fire department.
That was, but that was somebody else. It wasn't me that actually brought that up, so.
Right, I don't remember exactly.
Does anyone who wants to be trained?
Under the charter, general. General powers and duties two, four, one, except as otherwise provided in this charter.
Except as otherwise provided.
General, corporate legislative policy-making and appropriation powers of town should be vested in town council. And it goes further, says the town may enact bylaws and other measures in rules and regulations not inconsistent with the charter governing its own proceedings and other matters pertaining to the exercise of its powers and the performance of its duties. So, but it does a show in there.
It's elsewhere, it's elsewhere in the text.
There's another paragraph that's under, you, you had it, you read it.
I remember him reading it, yes.
Well, no, no, he read a paragraph that came directly out of, because he had his charter.
I think it's in, under the section of the town manager.
And it had to do with the running, so, because the date of the operations is, it's a real, is that fine line? We've always talked about it, the fine line of counselor, yes, policies and things that, for them, if you read that slower, it says, um, that they're enacted, that they, it's, it's all about like, the council's policy, the things that they counsel that are not in conflict with the charter, that's what you're all, which is like ninety percent, ninety-five percent of everything in this town. Yes, council has oversight, but there are some internal workings and there's a reason for that, so that you don't get involved in the hiring, the firing, and the, and the, you know, any kind of political bull amongst employees and all that.
I see, I see where it's, it's, yeah.
Right, exactly.
Yes, yeah.
That's what it is, it's, that's the balance of power.
It, it, it's a thing, yeah, it's a check and balance, and you can't have, you're in charge of the TM, and if that TM's not doing your bidney, I guess, then maybe that's where the, that's where the buck stops for you.
Right.
But you can't always beat the TM when he's not beating an employee or something, because that's.
We're not talking, well, this is.
That's not his job.
No, no, right, well, I, I know, but I mean, I'm just giving you an example, I'm just giving you an example, I'm, I'm sorry, I, if, if he's made a decision.
That's not his job, yeah.
Alright.
Okay.
But that's specific, employees, that's a specific issue.
Right, but if he's made a.
The town policy is different.
Okay, but if he's made a decision on the, on the day-to-day operation of the town, then it's under his, under his purview according to charter, then that's what it is, that's all I'm saying.
I can't.
Did you find the other parts?
I'm looking at it, it's just, it's kind of.
I had to search on the phone.
Right.
Computer, you're on strange.
I just remember when you wrote it, because you had it in front of you, so, I wouldn't know it either.
But the man, when the manager stated that, you know, it's, you shouldn't get involved in the workings of the department because they set policies and, and things that you really, the general public shouldn't be aware of. But I think the council's intent with that bylaw was to just that, they wanted to, not a bylaw, with that move, was to have some leeway in preventing the abuse of the drone and those kind of things. And so I think it was more a review of what the policy was going to be, and if it was acceptable. Uh, I think that's, it wasn't to tell them what this, what policy is gonna be, was a review of that policy and if it was acceptable, because this discussion was, they didn't want the drone to be used against employees or, let's say the drone's flying over an incident, and that drone picks up some, something going on in the neighbors' yard, and they're cool, you don't want that showing up at the TV or at the fire station for the world to see.
Well, obviously.
So those were the.
Well, obviously, that's a civil offense, or, yeah, then there's a lot of the rights.
Well, we got this, like, there was those rules and regulations to prevent that from happening, and that's what was the intent of the councils, wasn't to dictate what that policy or what that rule is going to be, if it was gonna be, if it was an acceptable practice for the drone, because they, and then it also within the drone, they wanted to have some, they had concerns with the operations of the drone because in all the findings out there from fire engineering and NFPA, uh, the executive officers or the command staff of the fire department or the police department should not be drone operators as they should be separate, so they wanted to look at that aspect also being in that policy.
Right, that is the only thing that I saw the conflict, um, or that I, that would, I think we had it in some of, um, I think, uh, the material Gus had, had provided, that, that, that you were not supposed to.
I can't find it on the phone, we have to look it up.
Yeah, I, I can't find it, darn it.
I'm, you're, it's much better.
I honestly do not like this website, but that's okay, that's just.
Our council's here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's, it's just absolutely out of control, like, I thought it was bad before.
I figured it would be under the duties.
It's pretty, it's got nice pictures, but that's about it.
I figured it would be under the duties of the town council, and, and that's where that section is.
Yeah, so duties of the town manager or something, it has to do with the town manager, the section of the town manager. If I'm, I could be wrong, but, of course, things in that charter sometimes are, let's start. It's been too long since I read it.
I know it says in there about, you know, con, contacting the department head or employee to go through the manager first, kind, you know, that kind of stuff.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, not to do something.
Yeah, the one, the one line that I can see that seems relevant, it doesn't entirely seem relevant.
It's not rules and regs, right, it's definitely this charter that you.
The one, the one section that I see that seems to be the most relevant, I'm not entirely sure that it is, is four dash two dash three subsection N, which says the manager may, will be responsible for the coordination of the activities of all agencies under his authority control with the activities of all other town agencies, including those elected by the voters of Southbridge and those appointed by other elected officials. But that's, that's coordination between agencies.
Correct. So it's kind of a, well, it looks up to somebody's interpretation.
And I don't know where the, where the first is, I remember you saying something about that, and I don't, where the first is.
Because in the charter, ultimately. Ultimately, the charter, the council is the sole, the sole boss, and he, they direct the manager, and the charter even directs, can have the council direct the manager to do something, even if it's against what he wants to do with the interpretation of the charter, so it's interpretation. Bottom line, it just, we're looking to get a, a, a fair and acceptable policy.
Oh, I know, I agree, yeah, that's, that's all I'm trying to do too.
Yeah, it's all in the law.
Yeah, I know.
Now, almost are curious.
Yeah, I know, now we're all gonna find this.
It's like tomorrow, tonight, looking at the charter.
You read it and it's out there, let's just look at the video. Clip it, clip it seven, or eleven, excuse me.
But this thing that you're talking about tonight was, I, I thought General Gordon was talking about civilian, not the fire department.
No, because, uh, no, Council Steve's let us know in our emails, because that's what came to us, that that was a, a vote that was taken, and therefore we should bring it up again, so he wouldn't have known that.
Right.
So, um, that's what, just to discuss it again. But anyway.
Doesn't actually seem to be.
All right, so regardless, Mr. Chair, or since you do not have them include the policy, and I think in my email back, my response was, um, that perhaps then you need to get fire department back involved.
I, I actually, I actually, I emailed Joe, Joe Huse, Joe Hewlic, and I know he was last week.
And they're not here tonight. Oh, that's odd, because he's usually really good about that stuff.
He usually is.
So I say maybe more notice than just from the end of last week, because even then I had to ask the town if we were having this meeting, when I went in to see, uh, after I responded that that was a good date, I got nothing, I got crickets, so when I was in the office, I'm like, hey, by the way, is that Gen Gov next week or not? And so maybe just there was some miscommunication.
There might have been.
And the other thing that you gotta consider is that originally drone issue became, was a PPP issue.
Yeah, that's true.
And not a general government.
Well, the, the drone itself was, the, the by, the bylaw and policy always came here, though. And we had that conflict, we had that, a very long discussion with Scott over, over that issue.
Right, and then what happened was Joe came here because he thought you were gonna be talking about the fire station, the drone, and you were talking about civilian.
Right, right.
And that's where it, it split up and went back to PPP, and maybe it should be a combination PPP, general government.
It probably should be, actually, that's probably a good idea, you probably should do it that way.
Yeah, I found the actual vote.
You did.
Um, and it was what you said, vote to authorize Southbridge Fire Department to use, use of a drone once a proper policy is approved by the town council. Yeah, so that was, um, August eight.
It was very, very, uh.
Yes, that was in the August eighth meeting. And then it was amended to say if it isn't approved, that it must be returned. So that was the second.
I thought we voted that down.
But they, I think they voted that down because it was already bought, and the restocking fee was like thirty-five percent.
Right.
Or something like that, yeah.
Oh, that was, that was, I was there, yeah, yeah. Okay, well, whatever they wanna do, vote on it or not vote on it, if it, this is what we're supposed to, if we're supposed to get the policy sent up and voted one way or the other, then it needs to come back, we need to have the.
Yes.
We need to have something in, you know, to actually, we're not gonna start from scratch, because it was pretty well done for us.
Oh, I agree, I agree. So, do we wanna cut this one, send this one to next meeting, too?
Uh, get, as long as it, I mean, check the regular date with, with, like, Mr. Hewlic or by, with the deputy chief of.
Yeah.
I mean, it'd be nice if it can put again, obviously.
Right, oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Considerations there, but, and if, and they've made some changes, or maybe they've already, maybe he's already looked at what was already discussed, and, you know, trying to get a happy proposal put forward. There may be stuff that's been done, but until we actually have communication.
And my, they've had the what, yeah.
All right, so I would check in with him.